Calling the border selection meeting to order June 15th, 6:01 PM. By roll call, Erica Blake.
Jennifer Dean-Wing, present.
Andrew Allward, present.
I think that's all we have for selectmen at this time. We're going to move on to announcements. Oh, actually, sorry, FinCom, you want to open your meeting?
Yeah, we'll, we'll open up the finance committee meeting. It's 6:02 and we can do it as well by roll call. Brian Pacheco here.
Ken Tubman, present.
Gary Gill, here.
Adrian Pettit here.
Thanks, Erica.
Thank you. So this is a joint meeting at this point in time between FinCom and board of selectmen. Peter, do you have any announcements on your side?
No, just you'll be getting to talking about town meetings. So folks will learn about that later.
Okay, I just want to remind people there is a, oh, sorry, go ahead. There was a delay.
Yeah, I'm just saying the election's going on right now till eight at St. Augustine's.
Yep. So if you haven't gotten out to vote, go vote. We also, I want a reminder, there will be a food drive this weekend, nine to noon at St. Augustine's. That's put on by the Knights of Columbus in the Blackstone Millville Food Pantry. It will be a no contact type of contributions. Basically, you drive up in your car, stick your hand out the window, somebody will grab a contribution from you. So all donations are welcome. There's also a flyer out on our website, I believe. All right, we have meeting minutes, May 4th, May 18th, that everybody have a chance to read through them. I know we had a large packet of items to read through for this week. Andrew, did you get a chance?
Trying to find it right now.
Jen, did you have a chance to read through May 4th and May 18th minute, uh, many meeting minutes?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
So the May 4th ones are all, are fine. I mean, the May 18th ones, though, on the second page under, under new business, it doesn't specify the, the, no, never mind, it does. So I'm fine with the minutes.
All right, looking for a motion.
Make a motion to accept the minutes meeting of May 4th and May 18th as written.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, I will sign those and get those over to Town Hall. All right. Any correspondence, Peter, you want to discuss here?
No, other than what we have on the agenda a little bit later.
Okay. So that's it for those sections. We can move into joint meeting with FinCom. I believe Brian's going to be presenting to us at this time.
Yeah, thank you, Erica, and thank you to the board for, for having us join you today. I think it, it's going to make sense before we kind of dig into some of the specific lines, just to kind of paint the picture and kind of the rationale that we as a finance committee came to last week when we looked at the budget. And I'll let Gary and Ken and Adrian kind of chime in with, with kind of their thoughts really quick, but basically it comes down to, we're seeing just some massive uncertainty in, in just the economic landscape in general, be it on a national level, be it at the state level, or even in some of, some of the other, you know, towns surrounding us. And so while, while Millville, you know, being a kind of a bedroom community is a little more insulated from that, you know, with property taxes being our main driver, we still as a committee felt it was prudent for us to prepare for the worst and kind of, you know, reevaluate at some point in September when we have another, another meeting. And so that's kind of the lens we looked at this budget in preparing for it and recommending it essentially. So I don't know if Gary and, and Ken and Adrian, if you guys kind of want to add a little bit to that, and then we can kind of dig into, you know, more, more specifically what we, what our differences are.
Yeah, I think, you know, back in January, I think that this committee was fully on board with the guidance that Peter provided to the department heads. And I thought that Peter and the department head did a good job of pulling together a, a conservative budget based on that guidance. And we're fully happy with that. But obviously lots happened since then, between then and now. You know, we have exposure of about 500 and the last year was 539,000. This year, the estimate was $551,000, which is our unrestricted state funding plus the, the Chapter 70 money. So that's about 10% of our budget. Towns around us are modeling and they're putting their budgets together based on various assumptions. So, you know, I've mentioned Natick as an example, they just updated their budget and they assumed the 30% reduction. I'm sorry, a 20% reduction in state aid. And so you're seeing towns around us laying people off. You're seeing hiring freezes, you're seeing salary freezes, you're seeing furloughs, you are seeing budget cuts across the board. And not every town, we've discussed about this, but not every town is doing this, but a lot of towns are, and a lot of towns are doing it, you know, some of the bigger towns are being hit immediately because of meals, taxes, and various things that, like Brian says, we are not exposed to here in Millville. But at the same time, we do have exposure and of course, the school system has a great deal of exposure. And because of that, we really felt that it was important, at least for the next several months, to have a minimal budget. And then when the state finally finalizes their budget, which hopefully will happen sometime soon, it hasn't happened yet. We get back together in the fall, we'll know much better where we are. And, you know, we can change course if it ends up that we're not going to be that deeply impacted. But I think the concern is moving forward as if nothing's wrong and sort of living under that premise for the next several months until we come back again. So this committee essentially keep that action with regards to pay increases, with regards to line item increases. Over last year, we were pretty conservative and unfortunately kind of held the line to get the budget as close as possible to where it was last year. So.
Yeah, I have nothing further to say, Brian. I think you guys both covered it well.
Thanks, Ken. Adrian?
Yeah, I mean, I guess the only thing I would say is just being in, working for a corporation and compensation. I mean, there's companies right now that are reducing salaries where they can temporarily. So to save money in cash, I'm certainly someone that works for a company doing that. And, you know, there's many companies from surveys around the globe that are doing that and furloughing people just given kind of the exposure of their businesses to revenue shortfalls, which we have. So I think just from a salary perspective, it's a hard argument right now to do any kind of increase that's not contractual by nature. And that was certainly something we took to heart. And, and, you know, and I certainly stand behind that, given what I'm seeing in kind of corporations today and the fact that other places are laying people off. So I think that's just kind of philosophically where we're coming from. Excuse me.
Yeah, thank you, Adrian. It looks like Aubrey just kind of joined us as well. Aubrey, we're just kind of going over kind of quickly our rationale behind, you know, some of our differences and what our mindset was going into the budget last week. And so if you wanted to add anything, and then we can kind of dig into the, the lines.
No, I think, and thank you. I apologize for being late. I was on a, a big work meeting and thanks for inviting us to your board of selectmen meeting tonight. I know there's an election today, so I appreciate you including us on this, the last meeting of the, of the current board. But you know, I think in January, when Peter first presented us with the the high level, you know, facts as to how we are going to, the guidelines as to how we are going to budget, we were all very much bought in and looking forward to it. And then when Peter came back and told us that, you know, for the most part, departments followed the guidance and, you know, we're in really good shape. We're all very, you know, much looking forward to that. And then you know, March hit and a lot changed. And so, you know, we've attended webinars from the Mass Municipal Association and the Association of Town Finances and been reading kind of a lot as to what other towns are doing and and the concerns other towns have from a revenue perspective. And in many ways, for us, because we, we get most of our revenue from tax, property tax, we're sheltered a little bit from that. But then from a state aid perspective, I mean, the truth of the matter is the last state aid projection numbers that we got from the cherry sheet were back in January before everything's changed. And it seems like, you know, the guidance we're hearing is that we don't, just don't know how those state aid numbers are going to fall out. And it seems the only thing we can be certain of is they won't be what they were in January. So in light of the fact that we have a shortened town meeting and that we're coming back in the fall to discuss some very important Warren articles that were punted, you know, from a finance committee perspective, we felt more comfortable going within extremely conservative budget for right now. And then as the state aid numbers become more clear, revisiting our recommendations to the extent that we're able to. And I think we're all hoping that we'll be able to do that.
Yes, Erica, I don't know if you, if you guys wanted to comment at all, or you want us to dig right into?
So I can understand where you're coming from. And again, I think Peter and the department did an excellent job following the guidance. It's probably one of the best. From me being on the board and being on finance committee, it's probably one of the best processes we have used. And I think it was pretty smooth. And I know it's been a little bit of a rocky last few months for everyone. And it's just too bad that we had to wait to this long to get a budget in front of us to look at and kind of discuss. So as I said to Aubrey, I think it's more prudent to use the time tonight to just discuss the differences we have. Because I think we've all been looking at this budget for months and months, and a lot of people have seen this budget already. But if there's any, any that you want to hit on that are not differences, that's fine. But I think starting with the differences and the explanation. And as I said to your committee already, Aubrey, you guys are presenting to us tonight. So we're here to listen and possibly comment.
Okay. So, I don't know, Adrian, are you able to just share the budget that we had put together last week?
Let me just pause you for one minute, Aubrey. I don't know if anybody else, any other board members had comments before we start, and then give you guys the opportunity, Jen, Andrew, and I don't know if I have any other selectmen on yet.
I'm good.
Okay.
Good.
All right.
Finance Committee, Madam Chair, so I sent the model that you had sent to me, Aubrey, which reflected the changes the finance committee went through last Thursday night. And I just gave, I think I lost, I just gave a high level description of the changes for the board.
Okay.
Um, can everyone see my screen?
Yes, I can.
Okay, and I'm not on mute. Good. Okay, so I guess I'll just run through the differences. I'm going to just keep them hidden unless we see a difference here. So the town accountant, we discussed this pretty, I think, at length about kind of the new contract. And again, I think the same philosophy in terms of negotiating contracts with vendors right now is given the current environment, not increasing our costs with vendors to the extent that we have the ability to do that. So we basically discussed with Peter going back and talking to Derek about continuing a 3,500 per month fee with a $3,000 year end close and no expense reimbursement. So he discussed doing that. That's the difference there. It's the 3,500 times 12 months plus 3,000 rather than the 3,750 plus 3,000. And the current contract is 3,500 per month plus expense reimbursement, from what I understand. But Peter, feel free to jump in and correct me.
That's correct.
So if you want, I guess I'll just go through the differences as the committee members want to comment or stop me, please do. Again, this is the assessors contract. We basically asked that Peter go back and talk to the vendor for the assessors and basically say that we're not looking to increase any vendor contract fees right now, given the current environment. So we level funded that. The treasure collector, collectors difference is just a level funding for last year's, here, let me see if I can. There you go. Is again, level funding to last year's salaries instead of having a 2% increase. I believe this is the same for the town clerk is to level fund the salary instead of including an increase. Planning board is the same thing, level funding salaries. Again, same thing with the town hall admin salary and the custodial salaries. This is, so the difference here is there's contract negotiations. The original bu- budget was put through with the potential to have a 3% raise. And we recommended that we don't do any raises in fiscal 2021, given the current environment. So we again, level funded both the police patrol and officer salaries and the part-time salaries and included the increase for the police chief, given that it's a contractual salary increase versus discretionary.
Just, just if I could on that, the, the 3% was really to cover potential increases in the contract as well as shift increases and so forth, increases in coverage. So specifically a 3% raise in the contract for the police department, just to clarify.
Okay. Building and zoning is to level fund the salary, the salary line. Tree warden, so this was also discussed at length about the stipend for the tree warden. We, basically, the committee decided that similar to last year, not to recommend any funding for discretionary stipends that aren't required. So Alex had added this last year at town vote and was voted in. So the committee took it out for this year, even though it would have level funded. And then the other piece was to deduct 5,500 from tree warden other expenses. And we talked about this quite a bit as well, because if you go back to your kind of run rate over, you know, 16, 17, we were down around 5,000. We bumped it up quite a bit in 2019. And I think the justification for that at the time was that we had had experienced some gypsy moth issues that required a number of trees to come down. So the committee's basically view was that we had invested quite a bit in this line item to address that issue and that we could come back and be more conservative this year and bring it back down to around where we were funding it prior to the 2019. So instead of 15, five, the committee recommended 10,000. And again, to just be conservative, given the environment that we're operating under right now.
Adrian, can you back up to on that for a second?
Sure.
Second. Okay.
So yeah, just to be clear, the, we'd reduce it to 10, but that's, you know, that's 2X of what it was running prior years before we had the recent bump, so.
Okay. Um. So, okay. Public safety communication is just again, level funding salaries. The Blackstone Valley Tech is removing the stipend for the committee member. Highway Department, again, with this level funding that are in the stipend. And then also level funding last year's public work supplies, which again, I think this was pretty much discussed at length and with the intent to where we come in later in the year to see if, if the town can afford to bring it up to the requested or the recommended 50,000. So that was a significant decrease. So we just level funded the street, street sweeping back to last year's budget. We did, I believe, the same thing with with a stormwater management. Although, okay. And then the library, we've had a lot of discussion around the library and just, I think where we landed for the 35,000 really was looking at, you know, in 2017 and 2018, when the library was operational and certified, you know, we were coming in around $36,000. I think from what the library had provided us, and we've talked a lot about this and, and the certification requirements. Now, the state mandate is $22,015 in order to be certified. But understandably, that's an average of the past three years that that has funded. And so two of those years is in the $11,000 range, which brings that average to be certified down. That'll start to go up again once the library's funded, has more funding through the town. However, an increase of $10,000 over what the 2018 actual operating costs were to be certified, a lot of that was coming directly from wages, salaries and wages just did not seem reasonable, given the current environment. So the recommendation is to fund the library at about $35,000, which is fairly consistent with what they were operating at in 2018 and 2017. So that was the justification. I welcome anybody else to comment as well.
Yeah, one thing I just wanted to point out with that is the library provided us with a breakout, as Adrian mentioned, of kind of how they built up to their budget. And so from a requirement standpoint, the library needs to bundle, you know, the, there needs to be a librarian on staff and the librarian needs to have minimum education requirements. And then the library needs to be open for 15 hours. So the library's budget buildup was based on the librarian for 15 hours and also the assistant librarians, for I believe 12 hours. And they have the kind of rate per hour to build into a salary number. And so when we were talking through this, we were saying, you know, by, by reducing the salary line, the library can kind of figure out how they want to staff it. So in other words, like, if they want the librarian to only come in for 10 hours a week instead of 15 and supplement that with the assistant librarians, or if they don't need the assistant librarian, 100% of, you know, 12 hours, or if they have volunteer assistant librarians who could help out, things like, you know, there's different ways of looking at that salary makeup and, and making it work. And so one of the things we talked about at length is making sure that the library is sustainable so that we're not year to year on this, you know, discussion of whether or not we can afford the library or it will be decertified. And so coming up with kind of a minimum amount of funding that will allow us to operate, but also sustain so that years that we, you know, maybe don't have a lot of free cash or you know, to the extent that we find ourselves in a situation where state funding is reduced by quite a bit. You know, what, what can we do to just make sure that rolling average is sustainable and we can also operate? So that was.
And I think also it's important, you know, different members kind of came at this from different directions. You know, my perspective was looking at what our bylaws say from a comp perspective. I mean, we have bylaws and we have ranges. And right now, the librarian's hourly rate is 2184, which was approved by the Board of Trustees at some point over the past few years. But our range, the top of the range is $22. I mean, for a library that hasn't been funded by the town to be certified in the past two fiscal years, to be paying at the top of the range, I mean, I would recommend just kind of from a philosophical perspective, that you kind of start at the bottom of the range when you, when you build this back up. But I think, you know, to Aubrey's point, it's not our job to necessarily tell people how to pay people, but what can we afford? And I think that, you know, at this, at the end of the day, kind of the 35 to 40 range was kind of where all of us felt comfortable, given the circumstances. And so, yeah, and I don't think that, you know, we had at length conversation with the library trying to understand, like, yes, we have to be open 15 hours to be certified or a minimum of 13 and a half, although we lose opportunities for grants through the state if we're not open for the full 15. But there was never real solid clarification on, well, how many hours of that does the librarian have to be working? Because the librarian makes, you know, more money than an assistant librarian that, you know, the town's paying minimum wage. So I think that's kind of where, you know, Aubrey was speaking to, is kind of looking more at, at how the pay is allocated on the hours and what the requirements are and coming in with a more reasonable number from a Millville funding perspective. And that is the 74,000 difference that we came to, which results, I believe, in a deficit of 10,000 as opposed to 85, 80, almost 85,000. So if anyone wants me to go back through anything or?
Thank you. That was nice and concise. I appreciate that. Actually, you answered one of my questions I had written down about. I know the librarian has to have a master's degree. So we don't know the minimum number of hours that the librarian has to be there, correct?
Bachelors, bachelor's degree, Erica, not a, not a.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Gary.
The librarian has to have a bachelor's degree.
Oh, is it a bachelor's? Okay.
Our size library is a bachelor's.
Okay. And do they need to be there a certain number of hours out of the 15 or 13 and a half?
I haven't heard that requirement, but that's a requirement.
All right.
Yeah, I agree. And when we had spoken with the librarian, we mentioned, you know, the potential of having the librarian less than the 15 hours. And Colleen had said, you know, that would be an option.
Okay.
The other kind of piece of information that I think, you know, certainly I considered quite a bit when looking at the library's budget is that year over year, that state mandate has to grow by two and a half percent. So we have a little bit of room, given the fact that the two years in past, we've been at 11,000. So, you know, every year, there will be a year that rolls off. However, you know, we want it, like Aubrey had said, we want to keep it a sustainable expense, right? So this year, one of the larger expenses that they have is $3,600 related to the Mars, CW Mars kind of dues or whatever. But after being certified, they said they would be able to offset that cost a little bit through grants, which is great. But the budget still will need to increase. So it's not necessarily savings to Millville. It's just money that can be allocated in other places. And, you know, from my perspective, I think at that point, if they want to look at raises or whatever, then maybe they use it then or, or use it for books and materials. But right now, you know, that's $3,600 that might not be that, it shouldn't be that much after they become certified.
Can you just expand that one more time, the library, just so we can look at that in the detail? I just want to see. So we're all looking at the same thing here. So which line was the CW Mars? It was everything. So I know.
3607, I believe, just based on, if we go down here, this is their actual worksheet. They have this CW Mars certification, we discussed with them. They said that could be covered through grants once we're certified.
Okay.
Well, again, just to be precise,
Thank you.
it would be reduced down to about 2,500 from the grant, which they essentially called automatic once they're certified.
Right. And I know that was a big topic over the last year or two, because the cost of the membership is. Right. And I know that was a big topic over the last year or two, because the cost of the membership is more if you're not certified and less if you are certified. So I just wanted to look at that line item. So I know the library had come and said it's either a zero or full budget this year, otherwise they weren't going to be open. So are you saying at the line item that you have at 35? What is the number there? I can't see it. Did they come to a conclusion with you guys, the finance committee saying, yes, we can operate with that?
No.
No.
And I don't accept this all or nothing. I don't, I don't think it's fair to voters. I don't think it's reasonable. I don't agree with that approach, so.
Yeah, we spent a lot of time talking about the all or nothing and what that really meant. And so we kind of went back and forth with the library a little bit on having them document out how their budget ties into each and every one of the requirements. And I think that, you know, the places where we identified as being movable, whereas they, you know, maybe disagreed with our approach is that salary line being, you know, they want to staff a librarian for 15 hours at a rate of $21 an hour, none of which is, you know, the rate per hour is not mandated by law. The number of hours isn't mandated by law. And then the assistant librarians don't have to be paid technically, you know, I know. So that's kind of where we ended up with the 35, whereas they ended up with the 45. And that all kind of, when you build that all up, it has an impact on the cost for the book materials and.
Thank you.
And I think I heard the term from the finance committee from the other night on this was they called it a pathway to certification.
Yeah, for us, it was important, even despite everything that's going on in these hard discussions we're having, to recommend a budget that recertifies the library. And we told the library that it was our goal to do that and kind of stand by it. And so we came at it as like, how can we be creative to help the library recertify and get it back, you know, for the residents? But at the same time, not be in the situation next year where we have a certified library again.
Yeah, and I, and also, I mean, I think when they came last year, their request was not in the 45,000 range. It was still under 40 at that point, too. So it just seems kind of astronomical to go from, you know, 36,000 fully operational to two years later needing 10,000 more. Doesn't seem reasonable.
The request, yeah, the request last year was 42, but still, you know, it's a sizable increase.
Okay. That's all I had for library. I don't know if anybody else has questions on that item.
No questions. I mean, so I know overall, and I'm happy to, you know, stay on and discuss anything else or answer any other questions or however, Erica, you want to move forward.
Yeah, I have one other general question. You guys seem to be talking about in the fall revisiting, in the fall revisiting what, I mean, obviously, we're going to have some cash around, hopefully, lots of it. What is the plan? What is the revisit plan that you guys are foreseeing for the fall? In general, for the entire budget?
Yeah, so from my perspective, I didn't initially intend to revisit the budget of the fall. And then, you know, the more and more we hear about the uncertainty of the state aid piece of it, the more we say, okay, we need to take a step back and be in a situation where we're not making cuts in the fall, right? Because the opposite of this is that we pass the budget under the guidance and then find out that the state aid number comes in way lower. And in the fall, we're here back with the budget trying to cut things, which is a lot harder position than adding things in. So from my standpoint and finance committee adding anything else, but to the extent that we have more detail as to what that state aid number is going to be, and I certainly hope by September we would, it would be to take into account whatever that revised number is and revisit the 2% wages in the highway would be the two, the wages and the highway are like the two pieces that we presume are open for revisiting, depending on where state aid lands.
And the 2% is the piece that I'm more concerned with, because do we tell our employees, you know, depending on where our state aid comes in, depending on what, how this budget shakes out? There's still a possibility that you'll get an increase later in the year, depending on a lot of moving factors at this point.
Well, Erica, I mean, we've got an unemployment rate of about 20% right now, so not having a sal, that's in the state of Massachusetts, right? So with that high of an unemployment level, and I get it, these people have gone through years of not getting salary increases just because of the other financial situations that Millville is in. You know, my perspective is, I don't know about state aid, but, you know, Peter indicated when we were having conversations that, you know, there is potential for revenues from taxation on marijuana, if that opens up in fiscal 2021, you know, and what that could look like from a revenue perspective could also help, you know, build out salary increases. But overall, kind of messaging, I think for people right now is, you know, one in five people don't even have a jobs. And so I don't personally think it's prudent fiscally to be giving out increases to people that are discretionary at this point in time, given our situation.
I understand that, but we will get the question. So and as, you know, as a board, in other words, we're the HR, we will get these questions. So I just want to see what this fall look back is going to entail for you guys. I know you don't have a crystal ball, but.
And there are other towns that we're seeing that are just passing a 112 budget for now until they have more certainty. So we tried to be a little bit more grounded in light of the situation we're in with, you know, the school and our partnership with Blackstone and knowing that passing a 112 budget would be really difficult right now for us. So I think our mindset is like, we're not going to go that extreme, but at the same time, we're going to try to be as conservative as, as possible, like other towns are doing until we are in a spot where we have more information.
You purposely did not go into the school budgets in this model. Right?
That's right. We kept the school numbers as they were.
Any other questions from my board? No. Any other comments from finance committee?
No, so our plan is we have our public hearing on Wednesday. Erica, I'm happy to talk with you separately tomorrow on where you land and, and then, you know, we'll take that feedback along with any public feedback we get on Wednesday before making our recommendation.
So my question to you is, we as a board haven't voted on this for the warrant. Is this your budget that you're submitting or we don't have a budget to vote on at this point in time?
So we always, I mean, we never vote on our budget until our public hearing anyway, because we want to take into account public feedback. So, you know, we won't have our finance committee budget by then, but the TA budget, I think by law is really the budget that you end up voting on anyway. Hopefully, we're as aligned as possible, but this is what we're going with for our public hearing in absent any, no major public comments that make us feel differently or any Board of Selectmen decisions that are compelling and make us feel differently, this is the budget.
Okay. Peter, correct me if I'm wrong, the budget that is being put forth to town meeting will be finance committee budget. And our recommendation as a board will be on that budget. Is that correct?
Well, the finance committee is the one that makes the, the group that makes the motion is their budget. That's correct. What you do will either be, you know, voting on theirs or, you know, some version of your own. But it's, you know, a handful of line items where the differences are clearly.
Okay, so we'll discuss that more once we get to the warrant item.
Okay.
Thank you guys for coming tonight.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Jen, were you saying something?
Hi, thank you.
Thanks. Okay, thought I saw Bobby, are you still there? Next item, Board of Health update.
Hi.
Hey, how are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Good, good. We're ready for your update. You have some good and exciting news for us.
Well, everything kind of has stayed the same on our end. We did have two more cases last week. We had the three that we talked about the last time that I was on with you guys. I believe that was two weeks ago. And we haven't had anything new in six days, so it's kind of been in the same level, not very many cases coming out of town for, for, I'd say about a month and a half, two months now.
Oh, that's good. So what are we at, like 18?
24, I believe, total.
Oh, wow.
Going back to early March, but.
Right, right. So 24, okay. Any new recommendations or any changes to recommendations at this point in time from Board of Health?
No, we've, we've talked about it pretty extensively at the meetings and Sherry had a really good idea about, about some possible things with the window. And, but it hasn't really changed too much since my last update with you guys.
Okay.
We haven't really heard anything new from the state. We did, you know, we progressed through stage two pretty well. I don't believe we're in three yet. But, yeah, I mean, it looks like everything that everybody's been doing, not just in Millville, but all across the Commonwealth has done pretty well to slow it all down. Us in New York are, you can see it if you look at the charts, our COVID cases are in steady decline and hospitalizations, everything across the board. So that's good news.
Good. All right. Any other questions for Board of Health?
Andrew. Just among the meetings.
I think that's it. Nice and easy for you tonight.
All right. Well, it's good to see you guys, all of you.
Good to see you. We'll see you at the next meeting or somebody from the board.
Bye now.
Okay. What do we have left on the call here? All right, so new business. We have a letter from American Legion. I think, Peter, you were going to talk through this. Quite a thick packet we have on that one.
That's right. So that's just some correspondence that's recently come in. We did, you know, renew the lease. There was a question of where to send it and so forth, but this has since been clarified. But I just wanted to include this in the packet so you have reading material. It includes even the lease agreement and some back and forth with Jeff Wing, who's been our main contact with the Legion.
Okay.
So I hope, you know, it's been tough to connect with him, as you can see by some of the interactions. But, and we've received this letter just last week and just wanted to share it with you for.
Okay. Is there any action from the board that you need at this time?
None.
Okay. Any comments, questions from the board?
Nope.
Okay, next item, Andy's Auto Class Two license proposal for an amendment here.
Yes, and so that, Sherry's been working, and you can see they're here on the call with us. Appreciate them.
Hi, thanks for joining.
Introduce yourselves if you could again. I know we've met before.
I'm Andrew Rockwell, the owner of the business, and this is my girlfriend Amanda Correa. She's helping me out a little bit.
With a lot of the paperwork mainly.
Okay, we have an amendment we need to make to the license here.
Yeah, so the question is really, and I've asked Sherry, and so when you first got started, she was just checking to see. It may be as simple as the board voting to amend, all it is is changing, it's an administrative amendment to an already approved and granted license to, for used car auto sales, basically, with, you know, the restrictions that you put in place and so forth. So all it's really doing is changing the name of the entity to be Andrew Rockwell DBA Andy's Auto Sales and Service. And so what's on the form right now that the board has already approved and signed is Andy's Auto Sales and Service. So either, I guess I'm going to look for a vote to approve, to make the amendment. And it'll be amended either as simply as Sherry adding Andrew Rockwell DBA to the existing license, which makes it simple. And if that's not feasible, we think it is, but until she actually gets the thing, the actual license in her hand and types it in, it, it, it may not be room right there on the form. So then it requires typing up a new form, and so then it would require approval of the board for the chair to sign the form. And/or maybe some of you come in and sign it. I'm not sure.
Yeah, I was just looking through, it looks like that's the, on the insurance paperwork here, it has the DBA. But does it have it on the?
No, so the application did not have the DBA, so we will ask for the app to be amended as well.
Right, so we have some backup paperwork here that ties out to what the DBA should be. Yes, I'm fine with that. I don't know if somebody wants to make a motion and I can sign off on a change once Sherry makes it. Just adding to the name here, the DBA.
Yeah, so I'll make a motion to amend the license for Andy's Auto Sales and Service with an addition to amend that to include a DBA of Andrew Rockwell.
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 Like the painter.
Differently pronounced the same, so Andrew Rockwell.
Again.
So how does that?
One minute, any discussion? All in favor? Yeah, Andrew seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And you had a question?
Just how does, how does that work? Would Sherry be contacting us as to when the changes have been made or if she needs anything further from us?
Yes, she'll contact you and let you know if she needs anything further, and then you'll get a new signed license from the town.
Okay, would, would that be like mailed or would we have to go there?
She'll call you and make the arrangements. She has all of your contact information, I assume, or Peter has it at least.
That's right. So she'll, she'll contact you, but we will want you to redo that application or at least amend the application you submitted, so we have that in the file.
So.
Because you applied as Andy's Auto Sales and Service. And Sherry had that, she can even provide that back.
Yeah, she'll contact you and make all the arrangements of what you need to do.
Okay, is there, like, do you know a timeframe as to when she'd be contacting us, just so we know when to expect it?
Don't know yet. Contact you tomorrow just to make sure logistics, she'll have the approval tonight from the board to make those changes. And then it's a logistical thing of connecting with you and physically having the form, either using the existing one or a new one that needs to be signed by one or more of the selectmen.
Okay, and one more question. So the application that we have to fill out again, just so we can straighten everything out, does, do all the?
No, we're not going to go through all that stuff. All it is.
Okay, all right. Sorry, my brain wasn't thinking.
Where Andrew signed as Andy's Auto Sales and Service, it just needs Andrew Rockwell added to that.
Okay. Okay, perfect.
Great.
All right, so thank you.
We'll get it as soon as you can, because I understand it's holding you up a little bit, so.
Yeah, the, everything was fine and beautiful, but when we applied to the state for the plates, they didn't like how it was. They said it needed to be changed, so it is what it is.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to next item, consideration of BMR transportation reimbursement vote, $120,000. Peter, you want to walk through what this is all about?
Basically, the school, BMR, received $120,000 more in transportation reimbursement in fiscal '20. And they're putting it into fiscal '21 as a, you know, placeholder, if you will, in the insurance policy of monies in case they need it. So there, the logistics of it is, not logistics, but the tech aspect of what they're doing is considered an increase in FY '20's budget. And that increase provides the town either to do nothing, which is what I'm recommending. And by doing nothing, it accepts that increase, but it's not, we're not paying more, they're just moving money from one fiscal year to another. And it's, I can't speak to it too clearly.
Well, we have the chairman on from.
I'm sorry?
I said, we do have the chairman on from School Committee, Jane Reggio, if you want her to chime in at all.
Yes, that would be great.
Okay, thanks, Peter. Thanks, Erica. Yeah, actually, Peter, believe it or not, had it right. We don't have an increase in expenses, we have an increase in revenue. And so what the school committee did was voted to use that money to put into a transportation fund. So it will actually be used to cover transportation, next year's expenses, assuming a larger gap in transportation reimbursement than potentially we had budgeted, or we don't ever get 100% back anyway. So it can only be used for transportation, but it does increase this year's revenues, which, which changed the budget, which is why it's required after the school committee to go to each town. And the town has two options, just exactly like Peter said, to call a town meeting and approve the change or to just ignore it and the change is approved automatically.
Okay, so Jane, I just want to reiterate, this money can only be used for transportation. You can't pull it into. Okay. So Jane, I just want to reiterate, this money can only be used for transportation. You can't pull it into, um, this year's operating budget for the school.
Correct. We specifically put it into a transportation savings account, if you will.
Okay. Cause I was just thinking, you know, if there's any shortfalls, it would have been nice to be able to use that money, but it can only be used for transportation.
Yeah, but we're expecting shortfalls in transportation as well. So at least it's going to, you know, hopefully cover that.
Okay. All right. Any other questions from the board?
Nope.
All right. Looks like Kevin has joined us now as well.
Yeah, I'm a little bit late. Sorry.
That's right. Better, better late than never. Okay. Any other questions, comments on this? Does the board need to have an action on this? Doesn't look like it. Thank you for, uh, signing on, Jane, to, uh, clarify that point.
Yeah. Thank you for the opportunity and good luck with the rest of your meeting. I will be listening on the live stream.
Thanks, Jane. I couldn't have covered that without you.
You're doing great, Peter, but thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So we have some police department appointments here notified by the chief.
That's correct. So the chief is asking for you to make those appointments, uh, specifically identified there. And then he's informing you of others that he makes as the, uh, fire chief.
Okay. I'm just looking at these separately. So let's, these are just renewal. Some of them are renewals. All right.
That's correct.
Anybody like to make the motion for the police renewals and/or appointments?
So I'll make a, um, a motion to appoint the following to a one-year term as part-time police officers. Effective July 1st, 2020, Thomas Reynolds, James Kuzak, Philip Friendson, Steve Lacava, Harry Cervantes, Nicholas Green, and Peter Galarani. Robert and Robert J. Johnson, the fifth, who would, uh, go under a full-time probationary status.
All right. Looking for a second.
How many of, um, these are, are any of these new? Or are they all just being renewed?
Uh, there, none of them are new that I know of. There's.
All these names look familiar.
Yeah.
I think it's to any new shifts. I think it's just, if there's any new, it's just to cover shifts that are already in the budget.
All right. I'll second that one. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Andrew, I didn't hear you.
Aye.
Okay. This is part two of that one. Jen, do you want to do part two?
Sure. I'll make, um, a motion to appoint the following to a three-year term as a full-time police officer effective July, July 1st, uh, 2020, William Coop, Blaine Shepherd, Scott Gould, and Roy Southern with the status of time legacy.
Looking for a second.
I'll, I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, four zero. Thank you. And we have some appointments. Uh, these look like there's a bunch of renewals for the fire department.
Yeah, we, that's just a, um, he actually has a strong chief.
Information.
Right.
So he makes those appointments.
Yep, that one's.
And you'll be dealing with appointments. We're going to be sending letters out hopefully this week to folks to make sure they want to be reappointed whose appointment, you know, in terms of are expiring the end of the month.
Okay, good. So we'll have that on our next meeting.
We have that on the next meeting. That's correct.
Okay. All right. To old business now. Um, Peter, our last meeting, we wanted to discuss, um, uh, opening town hall. What is the plan at this point in time?
No, we're going to wind up having a, uh, you know, I'll call it an ice cream window over at the, you know, side of the building, just as you first drive up with an awning and a window, uh, and tables and whatnot to ensure distance. There is going to be a, uh, one of those ring bells with, uh, video linked to two desks inside the building and there'll be, um, people will be able to come up. So we'll come out with, um, you know, when and, and who will be available on which particular days. The current thinking is, you know, trying to get to where we're at, two days a week. Nine to 11 would be likely the building commissioner and the town clerk. And 11 to one would be treasurer, collector, and other, um, for at least two days a week. Come up to the window if you need to do face-to-face, uh, interaction with folks. Any extent, uh, other accommodations need to be made, those can be addressed at the time with the individuals.
So we'll still be doing appointments as well?
Yeah, once we're physically ready. That's right. So hopefully sooner than later.
Okay. And there'll still be appointments available for people that can't be, uh, reached during those hours?
That's correct. Yeah.
All right. That's good. Maybe they can.
We think it's a good. Yeah, it'd be good, good setup. Uh, it's just, uh, getting it set up.
Yeah. They had a great setup at the polls today. They had the two tables and the, and the barriers. Um, they were, they did a really good job with that. So.
Right, right. Yeah. Sherry's been doing a great job, you know, on this next, the two items. She's doing a great job there as well. She wears her Board of Health hat, her administrative hat and her, uh, how shall I say it? She's very, uh, aggressive about ensuring the safety of, uh, from the virus for everybody involved. So it's.
That's good. Very good. All right. And I'll also look for another update at the next meeting as well to see if the changes have been put in place.
Right.
Okay.
And Peter, if, um, you need any assistance down there, my school year is wrapping up, so I'm, I'm available.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And if you need me to wipe things down during the day, I'm there.
Hey, I heard the binder jobs going on again too.
Yeah.
When is she doing that, by the way?
She's got to do that, uh, between now and Thursday, Friday. Yeah.
Okay. All right. Um, anything else on town hall?
No.
Okay. Uh, MECC, MECC agreement review and approval?
Right. So you've seen, we've discussed this. You've seen multiple drafts. Today I finally got, I had a meeting, they had a board meeting where they approved, uh, the intermunicipal agreement in its final form to incorporate the addition of Mendon and Millville into the, uh, Metacoma Emergency Communications Center, IMA. And so now you're being asked to approve and sign that, and it will be signatures of, uh, the chairman of the board, the town administrator, and also town council as to form of the agreement. The town council has reviewed the agreement. I've certainly been involved in their, you know, the process of getting to this point. It's a great opportunity for the town. It's, uh, part of the, uh, driving factor is, uh, state's 911. It is, uh, going to be providing significant grant funding for all of the communities. And hence that's why our, um, budget line item for the, uh, you know, the, the, uh, communications is, uh, quite small. Um, it would cost us if we were to try to do our own dispatch, it would be three or $400,000 a year easily to have 24-hour day dispatch coverage. So this is a great, great opportunity for the town. The chief really did a good job working with state 911 and the other chiefs in these other communities to make this happen. So this is a fairly straightforward agreement. It's updated just to reflect the change of adding, um, Millville and Mendon. They restrict, they, um, what we have, they have, each of the existing four communities have, uh, a member on the board represented by the respective town administrator. And, uh, Mendon and Millville will, because of its small combined size, will have one member on the board. And it will alternate between Mendon and Millville. Mendon going first. And so that's all in the agreement. I'm just looking for you all to, uh, authorize myself and the chair to be signing this uh, agreement on behalf of the town.
Thank you for, uh, getting that together. I know the chief did a lot of work on that as well. This is definitely good for the town. So I appreciate that. So if anybody would like to make a motion, um, I'm not sure if we made the motion the first time we discussed it for me to sign it, but maybe we should do it again to make sure, because I know this needs to get signed relatively quickly.
That's correct.
Okay. So if anybody would like to make a motion authorizing me to sign the agreement, I can get that done tomorrow.
Just looking for the wording. If someone has it.
Yeah. So the actual, but just to, as I said, it may not be tomorrow. Um, I heard later, late this afternoon from Franklin Town Administrator's Assistant, uh, that there will be six copies to be signed by the town's chairs. And what, what I'm finding out is whether it's just the town administrators can go and sign the six copies. And then they'll get the rest of it to everybody, or if both you and I have to go there and, and I don't know, Ryan Riley for council.
Okay. So, yeah. So should we make the motion tonight, just in case I have to sign it in the next couple of weeks?
Yes, yes.
Do we need specific verbiage for this?
No, I just think you need authorization for the chair and the town administrator to sign on the, this MECC agreement, intermunicipal agreement on behalf of the town.
Okay. Anybody would like to make that motion?
So I'll make a motion to, um, authorize the chairman and the town administrator to sign the MECC intermunicipal agreement for dispatching.
All right. Looking for a second.
I'll second that.
I just want to note that Jennifer did say chair. So at the time when this needs to be signed, it will be the whomever the chair may be. So that's good. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Peter, let me know when that is, uh, ready to go.
I know exactly.
Okay.
Yeah.
So now we're into annual town meeting plan. I know there was a nice little video cut out for PSA. So do you want to discuss the meeting and logistics and the plan? I'm not sure, Tim, you did a great job on that, uh, clip. I think we may even have a copy to play as well. Do we have the town moderator on tonight?
I don't see her.
No, she isn't on.
Well, what if you played the clip? Tim, are you able to do that?
Yeah, let me pull it up.
Okay.
Cause they did an awful good job.
Yes.
Clerk, the town moderator, who did a heck of a job planning for this and, uh, Sherry. The only thing they can't control is the weather. It sounds like it might be a little warm.
Yeah.
Make voting quick.
There you go.
Not always. You were at that last super town meeting, right? That was a warm one.
I forebode that when I had family in town.
All right. Um, it might be choppy. I'm not sure. I never really did video through Zoom before.
Well, you shall find out.
Do you hear it?
No.
Negative. No. All right. I might have to, um, change my audio input.
Okay.
Location due to the current COVID concerns.
I can hear, I could hear it.
So we're here at Millville. Good afternoon, Millville. I'm Jackie Lima, the town's moderator. I'm here to talk to you today about what you can expect for our annual town meeting. This year's town meeting will be a little bit different, both in its format and in its location due to the current COVID concerns. So we're here at Millville Elementary and I invite you to join me on June 22nd at 6:00 PM for our annual town meeting. Please note that is earlier than we normally need. It'll be at 6:00 PM. And instead of going inside, I'm asking you to join me on the ball field where we'll take all of our decisions and our town meeting will take place. So I just would like to take a few minutes to remind everybody that at the annual town meeting is the time of the year where people get to come out and have their voices heard, appropriate the budget and vote on things that matter to our town. In order for this to be democracy in its truest form, all members of the community must be invited and feel comfortable. Unfortunately, due to the current pandemic with COVID-19, many people in our town and community may feel unsafe about coming. We are taking this seriously and as your moderator, I've put together a team of people to help advise me on precautions that we can take and changes that we can make to our annual town meeting to make sure that all residents can feel safe about coming to this meeting. So as part of this meeting, we're asking anybody who may have COVID symptoms or who has been encountered with anybody who's tested positive in the last 14 days, to please stay home from the meeting for the safety of others. We're asking that you arrive early for check-in so that we can start the meeting promptly at 6:00 PM. We're reminding everyone that masks will be required for this meeting. And we're asking you to please leave your children or non-voters at home if possible, so that we can have safety for this meeting. When you arrive at the school, please park in the parking lot. We're going to ask that you follow the paved path to check-in and not the wooded area. When you walk down the path, you'll notice two check-in stations that will be manned by our tellers. They will be clearly marked so that you'll be able to identify which lane you should stand in based on street address. The tellers will be sitting behind plexiglass for their safety and will have hand sanitizer available for everybody when they enter. Once you've been checked in, you'll proceed down to this area. Here you'll be met by greeters who will hand you any materials, including the warrant that you'll need for the meeting. We'll have water on site as well in case it is hot. There'll be arrows marked on the grass to let you know which way you should walk to maintain social distancing. There'll be a tent set up here to provide some shade and there'll be chairs that are marked six feet apart. And some will be together in case your household arrives and wishes to sit together, but we'll still maintain six feet distance from everyone else. The chairs will be wiped down before you arrive, so there's no need to bring your own chair. There will be a separate section for those who cannot wear masks due to medical reasons and a section for non-voters. The greeters will be able to assist you and show you exactly which location to sit in. Additionally, there will be handicapped assistants available for anybody who may require it to get across the field. So once you've been checked in and taken your seat, we're now ready to begin the meeting. The Board of Selectmen has narrowed down their warrant to 11 articles. We'll be planning to use a consent agenda as well to limit the number of votes and therefore the amount of time that we'll need for this meeting. There's going to be a microphone available for discussion that people can come up to. I'd ask that everybody raise their hands and wait to be called on before approaching the microphone, so we are not gathering or forming a line behind the microphone. The microphone will have sanitizing wipes available so that before and after you speak, you can wipe down the microphone. Votes will be taken with a colored card that you'll be given by the greeters at the entrance. This will eliminate the need to yell yea or nay for votes and therefore limit the exposure and the spread of germs potentially. At the conclusion of the meeting, I, along with public safety, will be dismissing the attendees. You'll be asked to exit by row, proceed to the parking lot, get in your car, and leave the meeting without gathering. If the meeting goes too late and daylight becomes an issue, or if for any reason we deem it unsafe, we can recess and adjourn. We can recess and adjourn at a later time that would be announced. We really hope, based on the procedures that we've outlined and the accommodations that we've made, that we can have a safe and successful town meeting. I thank you all for listening and being prepared, and if you have any questions or concerns, please contact me at moderator@millville Mass.org. I look forward to seeing you on June 22nd at 6:00 PM for this great show of our democracy.
Thank you, Tim. Good job on the video. That was very helpful. Anybody have any other questions on that?
It looks better on YouTube and cable.
Yeah.
And it's on the website as well, the town website.
Right.
On the calendar.
Very good. Gives a lot of good information.
And ad hoc committee and for Tim for getting that all together. It's great.
Good job.
So one quick question. Are all the supplies such as the tent and chairs, is all, are all those purchased and or planned to be set up?
So those are all planned to be set up. Payments haven't been made on everything at this stage, but and again, that. Funding is include, was included in the CARES Act submission. Two hundred and eighty eight thousand dollars and what I submitted last week was. Asking for fifty three thousand. Some of which is reimbursable by FEMA, so the net amount out of the two hundred and eighty eight will be something around thirty eight thousand. This fiscal year, and it includes the costs of the town meeting.
And there are no hitches with the tent being set up or anything like that?
So far, no hitches. We do have to get the building commissioner to inspect the plan and. So folks are communicating with each other on.
And the rain date is the next day. I looked at the long view forecast, which is usually wrong, but it looks like rain Monday and Tuesday, so. That will be on the moderator's to decide what to do with the change in dates, so. So that's.
Provisions for restrooms and stuff like that?
Yes, it's gonna be. Go ahead, Peter.
Handicap porta potty there and somebody to wipe down between uses.
Very good.
I thought pretty much everything here, you know, between Tim and the ability to have our sound recording. Pretty amazing. And then all the efforts of, you know, what Jackie pulled together and Sherry and Diane and others involved the chief. And you see that summary of some of that, those details in your packets. Well done by the crowd.
Yep. Thank you for everybody involved on that text. Task team as well. There's a lot of planning going into this. Any other items to meeting logistics? And I just want to mention again, it's at 6:00 PM. The meeting, town meeting, a little bit earlier than we typically do it, but just to have some more daylight hours. At this point in time. And that is June 22nd at 6:00 PM at the school, Millville Elementary School with a rain date of June 23rd. All right, next items, warrant and budget status and considerations. We obviously have heard from finance committee tonight. It sounds like they, well, they will have their public hearing on the 17th. So it doesn't sound like their budget is completely final at this point in time. So I think we as a board should plan on meeting very quickly on the 18th. To discuss the final budget that is going to be put forth to the town.
What time of day would you think you would do that?
I would probably say around either six or seven PM. Because I asked that a meeting be posted for Thursday. Not sure if it has, and at this point in time. So we have tomorrow to post till for Thursday, right?
Correct.
So I think evenings usually work best for our board. So I would say 7:00 PM. It's just going to be one item, very quick.
Yep.
So.
And you'll also be posted for June 22nd. Because you'll all be together, obviously.
Right.
Question is whether you want to go early, so that's something you might want to think about and right before town meeting.
Yeah, so we usually do 5:30, I think half an hour before.
Okay.
We can do 5:30.
Yeah.
Do we want to designate like. Like because we can't, are we going to do remote from our phones? Are we, you know, are we, because we're expected to be there? Are we gonna, you know, be in a circle in the parking lot? Let me, what's the plan for for that?
For us to call our meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, we should. So the meeting will be on the ball field. So.
You left tables. You left tables.
Right.
Where you can distance yourselves.
So is is there going to be a designated table for Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee as it usually is?
Yeah, only multiple tables so that you're each six apart. So I would say that you, you know, that we put at MES Ball Field at the Boris in the selectmen area. Is how you meet at 5:30. Okay?
Okay. Yep, that sounds good. So for Thursday, Peter, a meeting on.
Will be Zoom.
Yeah, but Peter, Tim sent me a message. There's another meeting he's covering at 7:00 PM. So we can, can we do it at six or 6:30?
Six to give Tim a little room.
Yeah. Kevin, will you be able to make 6:00 PM?
It'll be squeezed, but I can, I can try to do my best to get there. Six o'clock is a tough time for me.
Okay. I'm. Jen, will you make it?
Yeah, I'll be.
I'll be there. And Andrew, hopefully you'll be there.
Hopefully, yeah.
Kevin, I mean, I don't know what you use for a phone, but you could always just call in and kind of listen, you know.
That's a technological train wreck that you're doing right here. Okay, I'm just gonna say that right now.
All right, yeah. So we'll, we'll post it for 6:00 PM. And if you're running late, Kevin, and it's only a few minutes, we could just wait for you. Just send me a text or something.
Sounds good.
The plan. And then Peter will have to also reach out to. The other people that went on the election tonight to make sure there's. So we'll do 6:00 PM on the 18th for our one final item for the warrant.
So you probably also have reconfiguration?
Um, I, I don't think so, not until the next full meeting. We usually do that at the full meeting. Because we don't know if people are going to be sworn in or this is kind of quick.
So you would go to town meeting with the existing. Configuration.
Yeah, that's what we've done in the past, I believe.
Okay.
I would say if, if the chairman or the vice chair were up for reelection, it'd be a little bit different.
Right.
Somebody opposes and wants to take my seat before the town meeting, they can just let me know.
Gotcha.
Last, last time I was already sworn in when we had the annual town meeting.
Yeah. But I think it was, I think it was a week apart. And this is only going to be like two business days, not even.
No, I was gonna say for Kevin, it was a month apart.
Almost, yeah.
Yeah.
And this is a week, so.
Yeah.
No, usually we do reorganizations at the next scheduled selection meeting.
Right, it's not usually one of this. I consider this a special meeting, so.
Okay.
All right, any other items for warrant, budget status considerations? Next thing was consideration change in the quorum size.
Yeah, put that in there, but I, I don't think the timing will allow you to do that from what I'm.
Okay.
Decipher here, so. Really, you know, there is a, they, they've allowed towns to select quarums of. Down to as low as 10% of their normal bylaw quorum size.
That'd be four.
I think all you need is 30 people on top of the 10 of you that are going to be there, you know.
Yeah.
I don't think it's a necessity, and you would need the town moderator to concur, and there's five business days and 10 business days and. It's just not going to get done.
No, hopefully it's not needed. I don't think it will. I think there's a lot of people looking for excuse to get out of their house nowadays, so.
Yes, yeah. Didn't you say you're offering free refreshments from the local brewery? Oh, no, that's. The other event I'm thinking of.
Oh, that's an event I want to go to. I think there will be water there, though.
Yes, there will be water.
Not water from the school either. It'll be bottled water. But if anybody wants to use the bubbler. All right, very good. Hope to see everybody there Monday night. A public forum. Tim, do we have anybody in public forum with any, anything?
No one right now. If you want to give it a 30 second, one minute buffer, you can keep going. I'll let you know if someone chimes in.
Okay. Selectment's former reports. Anybody have anything?
Two small things. One was. Kind of not to do with us, but it was just kind of a thing I thought of. The finance committee, did they ever adjourn their meeting or were they still holding a meeting? Because I don't remember them voting to adjourn.
I did not hear them vote to adjourn. Sorry, are you still there?
Yeah, I've been listening, and you're right. We didn't hold a vote to adjourn, so unfortunately, I think I'm the only one here though now.
I think we have video recording that they've all left, so I think we're safe.
That was just a side note that I just noticed. The other thing was, any updates with the audits at the, at this time?
Nothing really moved. A whole bunch of stuff was sent to them. I don't know if we talked about it the last meeting, but a whole bunch of documents were sent electronically. So. Nothing further on the internal audit. Subject matters.
So do we have a punch list, Peter, that we're going down, like a PBC list like I'm used to looking at? That we have to hand over to auditors? Is that a procedure typically?
Well, so they, they provided, yeah, schedule requests from various departments. So assessors had to provide information to them. Treasurer had to provide information and the town accountant, and the town accountant. Has been working directly with the audit engagement partner. On getting him all of the accounting stuff that he needed, and I believe they have all of the other stuff. Previously from.
So right now the ball's in their court to get the.
That's right. So they'll let us know further what they need, and then it will be a matter of scheduling some. You know, field work that they may have to do if they can't get it done from all of the files that were provided them. Because we, if you think about all the warrants are, you know, scanned and available electronically, and so. That they want to wholesome, you know, payments and supporting documentation. It really is already scanned and in the file they have, so.
Good.
Not sure what exactly they're going to need to do.
And the last thing is, is how will the swearing in of new. People's being, will, how will that be held with the current situation being what it is? Has the town clerk discussed anything or is there any plan for how that's going to happen?
I haven't discussed anything specific with her, but I, I believe that her expectation is that she would do it face to face, swear them in socially distanced. On upon appointment. So that's really what people will have to shout to her, make arrangements to get together with her. She'll come outside of town hall and do the swearing in as fairly straightforward.
Okay, I believe it was by appointment previously as well. It's just be socially distanced now.
Okay.
Anything else? Anything else from any selectman reports? Okay, town administrator report, Peter?
No, I think you have an agenda that covered.
We're making you official on the agenda now? Okay, do you have any items on the 48 hour window?
Nope.
That's good. All right, so I will sign the meeting minutes from May 4th and May 18th and drop those off. Peter, you'll let me know. If M E C C agreement is ready.
Yep.
And our next regular scheduled meeting is Monday, July 6th at 7:00 PM. Regular scheduled meeting, and we'll have our meeting at the 18th at 6:00 PM, June 18th at 6:00 PM. And June 22nd at 5:30 PM. If it's a rain date, we'll do it for the 23rd.
Right.
I should probably put that on the.
Same, yep.
Thank you. All right. Anybody like to adjourn or we want to hang out?
Motion to adjourn regular scheduled meeting.
All right. Looking for a second.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
I.
Bye.
Thank you all.
Thank you.